Welcome everybody to the November 16th meeting. Tonight in our audience tonight we have Councilmember-elect Bob Methley. Congratulations Bob on getting this done. We're actually looking forward to Monday, December 5th when he gets sworn in. Looking forward to that. Okay, the minutes of November 2nd, 2016, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
And a second. Any discussion on the minutes? Hearing not all in favor, motion carries. Financial report and payment of bills, do we have a motion to approve the financial report?
So moved.
And a second, any discussion? I wanted to read off the balances of the financial activity report. Currently, the town of Elton has $3,688,435.51 in our general fund. We got $2,707,113.25 in our water fund. We have $8,92,484.48 in our sewer fund. We have $5,662,376.11 in our major facility fund. For a total of $20,149,973.35 in all of our balances combined. I think that's the first time we've done over 20 million in the last couple of years, which is very good. Any other discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries. Next on the agenda, Lou, we have the Employee of the Quarter promotion presentation.
Yes, we do. Thursday, the Employee of the Quarter Committee nominated and agreed that the sewer work crews that should receive the Employee of the Quarter award is Keen this particular time. And this relates to back in August, the board was probably aware of the problems Sport had with her sewer. The sewer crew tried the easy way, I think, yeah, the easy way was to go down underneath to try to-
Try to rot it.
-rot out the sewer line, but the auger bed stuck in there because of, because the pipe was broken out in the street. So they had to excavate the street, but when they excavated the street, I tell you, it took quite a krill. They used the back truck and I guess you didn't have a hydro excavator or something, just used the stuff like that. And there was a maze of different kinds of pipes down there, I mean sewer and water, sewer, water, gas, everything. So it wasn't easy to get to. But I'll tell you, those people acted as the best and I'm proud of that whole team. They worked so well for how many hours, stuff, you guys put in a lot of hours that night, didn't you?
Well, probably about 20 hours.
We were leaving them out coming in.
And they certainly deserve recognition as the Employee of the Quarter award team. And that includes Mark Turnbull, James Moore, Fred Hayes, Ned Ramey, Carol Rogers, Danny Bonzel, Joe Stanley, Mike Campbell, and I think Ricky Gray might have been involved in it. I'm not sure. I'm glad he does, he was on the thing.
Can we invite you guys up and let you- All right, let's get in the line and we'll get Lou to get a nice photograph. Thank you guys so much. Did he go get his cameras?
Yes, he did.
Here we got the others. We'll get it, we'll get it. You know, all we need is a picture of that, whoa, get in here. All right, Chief, you got one, can you get us all in there, Chief? All right, ready, one, two, and then Louis will come in with the real camera.
John's head there.
Okay, here we go with the big cheese. Excellent, there we go. All right. Thank you. Thank you guys so much. Thank you.
I would like to say that's not only work four hours and work really deep. If you came by, someone like me, they explained exactly what they were doing. So that was great, thank you.
I'd like to, do you mind if I, I was gonna bring this up anyway, but I wanted to compliment you, the whole team, because in my neighborhood, I know we've had three instances where we've had troubles. And you've been prompt, everybody's always courteous, the work is done in a timely manner. And you're just like a well-oiled machine and very proud of you and very grateful for your work.
Thank you.
I want to also say I do appreciate all the work you guys do. I drive through town, I see most of you every day of the week. It's good to see them working in a friendly way when I come by. But I can't say that now, I remember you guys working long hours and the town was going to treat you to some dinner. And I just want to thank Michelle because she came, our own partner, bringing us all dinner, I do remember that.
Yeah, me too.
So I want to thank her.
So you can share that award. Very good. Okay, the next item, we have a public hearing on Ordinance 9-2016, Article 16 on signs, Section 16 enforcement, presented for introduction. Jean, are you doing this or is-
Sure.
Tell us what it's all about.
This is just basically a housekeeping item. We are making a minor correction to the Article 16 signs, Section 16 enforcement. Everything's going to remain the same under that ordinance, the exception of a penalty, which states that any person violating the provisions of the article shall be guilty of a misdemeanor and shall upon conviction thereof be subject to a fine not more than $1,000 and/or imprisonment for not more than six months as been stricken and 90 days is inserted. And that's to be consistent with our county code. So it's basically a housekeeping item. The House of Crime Commission on November 7th has recommended approval to be amended.
Very good. Do we have a motion to accept for introduction, Ordinance 9-2016? So we have a second. I wanted to make a comment, it's the reason why we struck it down from 60 days to 90 days is our hope that if we, if there's an issue with this ordinance, that it would stay in the district court, not go to the circuit court, which prolongs this. And I wouldn't blame anyone the way it was written before. I wouldn't want to be in jail for six months for not obeying a sign ordinance. That's a little crazy, but. This is a, is it a public hearing? Should we open up the floor? Lou, do we have to, do we have to open up the floor for the public?
Yeah, you do. This is a public hearing because they changed its own ordinance.
Very good. It is 10 minutes after seven. If anyone has any comments that they'd like to say on, in regards to this ordinance, please come up and sign your name in and tell us good, bad, or indifferent. If you have any comments or you can wait until we vote on it at the, are we voting on it now?
No, this is a public hearing.
Only for introduction.
And it's for introduction, but they won't have a comment period when you have it for adoption.
Gotcha. I'm getting, I'm getting used to this again. Seeing no public comments, the public hearing is closed at 7:11?
Closed.
Wow. So we had a motion on the floor and a second for introduction. Do we have a motion? Or do we, do we, all in favor?
Aye.
I'm a little confused.
Introduced, that's enough.
We have introduced him.
It'll be presented for adoption at the meeting on December 7th.
Very good. Lou, you were on.
The first item I have on my agenda is a grant of waiver for alcoholic beverages. This is the Maryland District League Season Harford Cater Dinner scheduled for December 15th. Louis Crabhouse, I guess is the vendor, this will be the caterer. So we need a waiver for the alcoholic beverages during that event on the 15th of December.
Do we have a motion for a waiver of alcohol, or a request for a waiver of alcohol?
I'll give a request on that.
Do we have a motion? Do we have a second?
Second.
Any discussion? Hearing not all in favor? Motion carries.
Next item I have is a request for approval to purchase the Bell Hill property where the Bell Hill Water Tower sits. As I explained to the board sometime at the workshop, the Bell Hill Water Tower sits on a perpetual east and rented by the Maryland Transportation Authority. In order for the town to expand and use that property, we actually have to own it, be simple. I approached the Maryland Transportation Authority almost two years ago, requesting that they sell the property to us, be simple. And it's going through a very elaborate process, obviously, with the state culminating in the the Board of Public Works approving the transfer of the property to Elton. And also the deed has been signed by the governor, the comptroller, and the treasurer. And I was notified today by the title company that it's subject to settlement at this time. So I need the board to approve the payment of $49,000 for this parcel of land to the Maryland Transportation Authority.
Do we have a motion to approve the purchase of land for the Bell Hill Water Tower site?
So moved.
Good motion and a second, any discussion? Lou, I think you did a great job with this and the $49,000 that we're paying for that site of the land, once we start negotiating-
Your Selco partnership trading is Verizon?
We will pay that back in two, man, three years. Great job, Lou. Any other discussion? Hearing not all in favor?
Aye.
Oh, she cares. Very good, I had a couple things. On occasion, the town of Elton is very fortunate to receive money from the Maryland Department of Housing and Community Development. And one of the block grants that we received was for our raceway dredging. And on occasion, we get audited. And I probably on every, on every time. And I'm pleased to announce that grant number MD14CD22, which was the raceway dredging, there were no findings or matters of concern. So Jean, thank you so much for handling the grant process. And staff, thank you for carrying through to make sure that we didn't do anything wrong and it was a successful project for the town of Elton. Thank you so much. Here to my right, we have a trophy, and it's not a trophy that I just recently won. But when I served as mayor many years ago, one of the things that we kicked off was a Mayor's Cup. We, we were very fortunate that Patriots Plan Golf Course just came into existence and we, and we thought that we were going to carry through and host a tournament every year. The town of Elton would sponsor it, it would be a benefit for our recreational programs for the town of Elton. And if I remember correctly, this was our, our first time that we did it in 2002. And it was our last one that we did because I no longer served as mayor after that. But John Bruhl and his team were actually the winners of the Mayor's Cup back in 2002. And he brought this to us. And then actually, I think it's something that we need to kick off again. I think that year, I'd almost like to go back to 2002 and find out how much we raised for the Parks and Rec.
It was a lot.
It was, it was a really nice event. I think Patriots Plan actually donated the course to us. And I think we raised, I know, well over $5,000 at that time for the Mayor's Cup. And I'd like to let the board know this is something I'd like to kick off again for next year. And maybe we can raise additional monies for our Parks and Rec programs.
I think it's a good challenge. It involves some other towns on the county that play against us.
I think so too. So that's what sir John, thank you.
Some people may not know this is golf.
Oh, it is golf, it is golf. And I appreciate John bringing in his trophy that he won in 2002. It's gonna stay here. But I just wanted to let the board know, we'll start organizing that, we have the Parks and Rec maybe involved in that and see where we can go with that. Very good. I think that's all I had, well, actually I had one other additional thing. We have a lot of additional things, so hopefully I'll remember them all. But the one, the Elton football team is hosting the regional playoffs on Friday night.
It's the- Regional finals.
Regional finals.
Yes.
And, and I don't know how many years it's been since Elton has hosted a playoff football game. I'm looking at John Roush over there, it's probably, it's been years.
It's been nine years.
Nine years. I hadn't been that long ago, I was thinking it was 30 years ago.
They had the regional final. They hosted the playoff game prior to that, or did they?
No, we played at Queen Anne's. They haven't hosted a game since 2007.
2007, very good. Well, we're very fortunate, we're hosting another game, we're in a final eight. And if we're fortunate to win this one, we go to the final four and into the two. And then maybe we'll be at Raven Stadium. So you're gonna see in town over the next couple of days, there's gonna be some signage going along Bridge Street as well as Game Street and Singerly, or Singer, 279. We're gonna be placing some signage that's gonna say "Go Elks." We're gonna do some blues, we're gonna get everyone pumped up for this. Hopefully, there'll be many people in attendance for the game on Friday night at 7:00 PM.
Six dollars.
Six dollars to get in? Tell me no Commissioner Gibbons? You can get 5% off or something. But I'd love to see a big crowd there. So that was, that's, that's the one thing that's pressing. I also wanted to mention that this year, we're, we're gonna be hosting a contest to our residents of our town for decorating, decorating their homes. To, to be eligible, you're gonna have to register here at Town Hall, or is it?
Online.
Online, okay, here we go. Right there, Keith is right here. Okay, you gotta register online at the Parks and Rec. The deadline is on December 14th. We're gonna actually announce the winners on the 21st of December here at this meeting. And we are gonna give some cash awards. First place, $50, second place, $30, and third place, $20, gift certificates. And I'd like to just mention that it's something that we want to get that spirit back. So hopefully, everyone would have some interest in decorating their homes for Christmas and let's show some community spirit.
How are you getting that up?
It's on currently on the Parks and Rec website, it's on the town of Elton website. And I have also posted, and I haven't posted it on my Facebook page. And we're gonna ask the Cecil Wig to talk a little bit about that in one of their articles here in the next couple of days. Also, I'm asking our Elton Alliance and Chamber. And we are asking the businesses on Bridge Street. We want to light Bridge Street up this year for Christmas. I don't know, last year when I went along Route 213, you couldn't even, I couldn't even get into the spirit of things because I don't even think there was a Christmas light on Bridge Street. So I'm gonna, we're going out and we're gonna try to do our best to get some spirit along Bridge Street. That's our main artery going through town and maybe we can get that lit up. So I'm actually excited about it, it's a great season, things are going well. And I'm looking forward to getting those lights. And we're gonna do some work down at the park this year. We're gonna try our best to light up better parks a little bit this year, which is something that we've never done before. So, pretty good. With that, Jean, you're on.
The only thing I just wanted to report to you in the morning is that I was able to go to the grand opening of the new oncology center, Green Hospital, on Monday. And that is truly a remarkable facility that we're very, you know, lucky to have right here in downtown. For, for any of the county patients who, you know, some from cancer that need that radiation treatment or any treatment, you know, it's, it's a fabulous thing. You don't have to travel to Baltimore or Bel Air or whatever. And I'm just really thrilled to have it here. If you can stop in and say it.
Thank you. Charles?
Well, I attended the planning commission meeting, what, two weeks ago, to the mayor. And at that meeting, the planning commission had asked Lawrence if he would write a letter to Wawa because they had a very good man opening and the town did a very good job as well and assisted them. So Mr. Ginder, who was one of the members of the planning commission who was here, please let the planning commission know that a letter was sent and all the board members should have gotten a letter that Lawrence wrote to the Wawa manager. That's it.
Yes, we did.
Thank you. Earl?
Yeah, I didn't get my feedback from the Parks and Rec for the report for this month, but I'm pretty sure the winter sports are ready to begin and they're ready to take registration or applications. But I will have more detail on next meeting. But one thing, Mr. Lemon, something that he initiated through the high schools, had a chance to meet with the middle school principal yesterday. And almost the same thing that Mr. Lemon had wanted us as a board to look into the high school to start interacting into some educational stuff for the town. Up to middle school principal and I think their parents are getting together and they're working on trying to team up with the middle school students. And I don't want to take away their thunder, I'm pretty sure they're going to come in and talking to us about this. But we really are getting a lot of involvement from the middle school to do more things with the town, for the town, and find out more of what the town does as a whole as far as the department, the town board, mayor, and commissioners. And a really good meeting I had referred yesterday. So come in your way soon, more information is in there. But they didn't know you even done this, but it's, it's all good. So I just wanted to give you credit for all they did, they didn't know you did it.
Well, I was gonna mention that last week, we had 75 third graders in this room that I had the privilege of actually speaking to about local government. So it was the first stop of many for them that day. But it was, I believe it's gonna be an ongoing part of the school system for them to make this little room, which is great, great that they could understand a little bit more about the town government.
And one more thing to add on that, I'm starting a basketball league at Elton Middle School, starting November 29th. Our school program from 3:15 to 5:00, Tuesday and Thursday, up until January 5th. Then run into the Parks and Rec movers program starts on January 1st. So just adding all these little things in, looking at how we can take a middle school program and start developing these young students into being prepared for high school. So this is one step towards it. I talked to Commissioner Gibbons, we haven't taken this to the school board yet. But I'm looking at in the future, Elton Middle School in Cecil County and middle school basketball program to like high school. So that's a thought and a dream, so maybe they'll come to reality.
Very good. Very good, you're on.
Since Jean is here, I do want to commend you on the municipal parking lot down off of Main Street. It is absolutely beautiful. If you haven't seen it yet, I'm showing some on a business today and they came back from a couple of months ago. That parking lot was just what they wanted to see. So, you know, that was through community legacy grant money and it's so nice. It's made such a difference to that area. So great job, thank you.
The Department of Public Works was key to that parking lot being a success.
Yeah, I saw them working today.
We, we'd seen in well over the grant amount and Public Works was able to act as a, this general contractor on this. And some had a lot of the work and did some of the work on their own, bringing the cost down. But then we're still gonna exceed the grant a little bit, but not as much as we would have had a few other things. Right, but Public Works did a great job.
Good job, Public Works. And actually, please look at calendars, there's so much going on in town from the 1st of December till Christmas. Look at the Elton Chamber and Alliance website, Big Book, whatever. And the town of Elton also has it, or it's in your Town of Elton guidebook because there's a lot going on for families the entire month. So make sure you, you come out and enjoy it. And happy Thanksgiving to everybody, which is next week. Enjoy your holiday. That's all I have.
Very good. This is the time of the meeting that we open up the floor for anyone that would like to speak. And if you do, please raise your hand. I'm gonna ask you to come sit down here at the chair and sign your name in and tell us who you are and where you're from. Anyone have anything to say this evening? Come on down, sir.
Raise my hand and speak.
No, 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 just sign in and you can tell us who you are and your address and-
Okay, my name is Ray Murphy. I live at 233 and 231 West Main Street in Elton. And I'm here this evening because of-
Water bill.
I've lived at that address for 30 years now. I've been a resident of Elton for 70 years. That house has always had one meter in it. And I was informed by Mr. Drypole Rico that now I'm being charged for another unit, which I don't think is fair. It's a duplex house granted, what I've needed is one house. And they had somebody come out and inspect it and everything and said because it has a kitchen and, oh, and it has one unit. But it's not, I don't grant it. I just don't agree with the minimal charge. I mean, it's like going to the gas station and getting five gallons of gas and having to pay for 50 gallons because they have 50 gallon minimum. I don't know if anybody's ever brought that to the board or not. I just don't think that's a fair issue. Because I just got a bill, I was supposed to get the double bill until November. And it says I used 12,500 gallons, but I was charged for 18,000 gallons. I don't know how, they expect two people. One on just a double, is disabled, and one getting disabled, headed in that direction. But I just don't, I don't agree with it at all.
Are you paying the one real estate, just one real estate tax?
Yes.
Just not two?
No.
How did this come about?
I got a letter from Mr. Rico that was replying that the house has one meter and then I should be paying a double. I should be billed for the other house.
Did you explain that situation to Mr. Rico, which is explaining us?
At that time, he sat in his, and tried to get a hold of me through the phone a couple of times. He was out sick and still haven't heard a call back yet, past couple of days.
We build in duplexes, we build both, both houses duplexes all over the town. Not just one individual house, whether rented or not rented, that's how, how we, our building's set up.
There was bother down the page when Mrs. Murphy mentioned about building saw the other end. It was with that one, there was been a letter saying that we become aware that there are two units there. They would charge that being a good first bill. Does not correct contact or building zoning department. They would go out and conduct inspections, see if there aren't that two units there, which they found there aren't that two units. You were going with that at all.
My question, my question is, that house has been that way for 90 years. And I don't know when they put the water meter in, but they deemed only one water meter was on it.
You were-
I paid for it, the water comes in. We got flush tax now, we got gift, trash tax, we got this tax. I, I can see why West Main Street is becoming a ghost town. And I can see why West Main Street is becoming a ghost town.
Mr. Murphy, you, you were always billed one bill?
Yes.
And then just recently you were billed two bills.
Yes.
Very good. Is anyone else having questions?
I have a, more or less a comment and a suggestion. Number one, I, I spoke to Mr. Murphy about this and I, you know, I can't go against what our orders said. But one of the things I'm asking, I asked Mr. Murphy if he could ask the planning board, how can he go about rectifying this issue? Number one, you may want to remove one of your addresses. Negative single addresses to the duplex address. Would that eliminate the double bill? Now, that's number one. Number two, based on your tax findings and you're, you're not renting, a letter of support based on he's not renting nothing. Why can't we as a board work with him on settling this or helping guide him in a way that he can solve this problem? What I have in the frustration he has, that's basically what I'm asking. Not putting you on the spot, I'm just saying there's got to be a reason and a solution behind this. If it's unaware to him about the double bill, he's getting hit with it, now he's going to be stuck with something that he didn't expect. How can he fix this?
There was never any path to go back, you know? Okay, there's a number of letters that Murphy's intended that they would be billed that for two units, not retroactively, but again, of course, still, of course, this came out a couple of weeks ago. The town ordinance doesn't rest whether the living unit is occupied or not occupied, or whether the water goes through one meter that serves two or more living units or not. The determination whether it's a second living unit, therefore warranting an additional water bill, is determined by code enforcement, whether there's a place of repair, there's a space, there's a payment. And so there's actually, they indicate, you know, all that.
Mike, how long have you said you've been there?
I've been here thirteen years.
In that same house?
Yes.
You've never rented?
No. I mean, I stayed there when visiting.
And, 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 you know, he has the, the one tax payment that's, that's all those concern, only one of the, you know, hardship clause has to come in there in some ways because he's been doing whatever. And somewhere along the line, it's all under grandpa clause.
That's my next question. Would it be feasible for grandpa clauses for some of the older homes that are converted in? I know there's probably three or four, maybe a couple of dozens down in Highland where it matters, if it's converted to one house.
Well, there's a lot of, even with the businesses on Main Street that have unusual addresses. There's a one twelve, one fourteen Main Street, there's a one eleven and a half, and then a one... So there's very unusual addresses on Main Street. I don't know that. So that, but my question is, have you ever rented the other side of that building?
No.
No, okay. And is this from the audit that we've been working on?
This was, this was made a few years ago, this is Mrs. Murphy, she had to comment herself.
So is there like a wall that you, you live over here and there's a solid wall and there's, there's no connection that you...
I have doors, we go in and around.
Yes.
From side to side.
The State Department of Assessments and Taxation has legal description as two thirty-one, two thirty-three West Main Street.
John, I want to ask Councilor a quick question and, Mr. Murphy, you're not the only one. I mean, this is, this is came up...
I didn't understand.
I know that we've, we've got quite a few.
I don't understand that.
And listen, it, it really hurts us here and we have an ordinance and we ask that to follow the laws of the town and that's our challenging part. But I got a quick question for you, John, as we're here sitting. If, if Mr. Murphy, can we tweak our ordinance in a way that, for example, if Mr. Murphy or Mr. X or Mr. Y decided that, and they did under affidavit, it stated they were not renting that other unit, would that, is that something that could be done to, to waive that second?
There may be something that we can do, I don't know if that's the way to do it.
Okay.
Because I don't know what's happening on renting the property, you can imagine...
A hundred percent of the homes in Elton are rentals. So if you had owners supplying affidavits to the town for certain periods of time, if it wasn't rented and we, and we didn't build them, we wouldn't have to staff the managers.
But this is not a rental situation, Mr. Murphy.
No, we're talking about, when I say rental, I mean, people have...
I think there's been certainly a little bit, I mean, this was going to come up as an issue, so, you know, we're looking to say right now, but I think there may be something we can do, but what I was saying about the rental issue is you can imagine the problems that that would cause for our code enforcement people.
I know, it's good.
Continually go back and monitor and draw up by the fact that it's not being managed, it's not being managed. I don't want to create a larger problem trying to fix this problem. I recognize it's a legitimate problem, we can take a look at it and see what we can do.
Mr. Murphy, we'll have you answer here very shortly. Okay, thank you.
Do you have Mr. Murphy while I'm waiting or?
Want that quiz? We'll see you two, two Wednesday.
This is the first time I've been to the medium finding a price meeting. It's been a while. I'm sure it's happened though.
Listen, if you want to come back?
No, no.
All right, very good. Thank you so much.
Thank you very much.
You can leave that paper there though. Mr. Lemon?
This issue, Mr. Murphy was talking about, came up two years. We had discussions on the greeting table and then we never heard no sense in it. And simply, very simple thing, it shouldn't be built for anything except what the leaders said. And if we, if we get to that, there are no other problems. I just don't see the logic of what we're doing. We had this discussion before, we went on it over and over again, and that's why we have water meters. You measure the water that goes into the facility, whether it has apartments or whatever the home has, you just measure water. So I support Mr. Murphy and anybody else that's in that situation, because what the town is doing, I don't know how this happened to come up again. But it doesn't make sense, it's not logical, it's not reasonable, and it's not right. That's all I have.
Thank you.
Thank you.
And, and you know, just to add to that, I know the board voted to move forward with another additional water and sewer study and, and I don't know where we're at with that. And, and I guess it was two thousand seven or two thousand eight, the town of Elton entered in with their new tack, or the new water and sewer rates. And there's, there's a whole list of matrix that this board had to look at. And one of the matrix that they decided on was that there had to be a minimum billing. And with the minimum billing, there was X amount, that's how your bill went. During that study, there was four other options. And one of the options was, as you brought up, Mr. Lemon, was to bill what goes through the meter. And, and that's the way it is. Now, the challenge of that is, is I, I have to defend the board a little bit when they made that decision. If they billed everyone by the gallon of water to, to make, make the system work, the price per gallon would have had to creep up a little bit. And, but I know that we're moving forward, where do we stand with the water and sewer audit?
There's a long going audit at this moment. We constantly, we're made aware of things that are not bill consistent with our board's opinion. That's not such a good idea.
Did, did, did the town vote to move forward with a consultant to come back in and, and go through that? Didn't we do that?
I recall, they were, they thought that, they were years, years ago, it was kind of left hanging. They, they did not, they did not present any great findings or recommendations to the board at the time. We were aware that, as we look into, well, next month's workshop, you know, changing...
Well, I know we were looking at the water, but one of, one of the issues why we haven't moved forward to reduce the sewer rates, in my opinion, is because I thought we were waiting for the information on, on our, to find out if we could do that through a consultant. So I guess, I'm a little confused, should we, can we, wow, that takes me back a little bit, because I, I really felt that if we were moving forward with someone in here doing some consultant work on, we're in sewer rates.
What about the Municipal Financial Services people?
Yeah.
No, they're, we haven't engaged them, we can ask for a formal proposal, but we haven't done that.
Can, can we get that vote, last of the word?
In June or July, I, I remember making a statement that we wanted to take the extra finding of water that we found and turn it back into taxpayers, to put in their pocket, to reduce, reduce their bill. But we said we were going to hold it up until an audit was being done before we made any changes. We wanted to cut the water rate.
The board reduced the water rate in March or something.
No, 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 I'm talking about just recently, because I remember we found some additional money from some...
From board.
I don't want to say names, but the thing is, I made a motion that we give that money back as a rate, a reduction. And the thing is...
We don't have a way to give money back.
Let me, let me say this, wait, okay, let me just say this. I made a suggestion that we do something to reduce the rates, okay? When I say give money back, I'm, you can say whatever you want. I would like to reduce the rates. But we held up because of a study that was being done or audited throughout all these other little bits of pieces of property that wasn't being billed. Now, that's where the mayor is saying these little bubbles, because we're going to wait. But the thing is, when this financial study was done, it was to help pay for this water sewer plan. And I still say that audit was done and I don't think we had the full amount of water being implemented into this study. And that's where all these different rates are, are off. I never voted for it because the, the financial group who'd done the study, if they were to come back in again, I'd say, see, we were wrong because you didn't add every bit of piece of water that was should have been into this equation. So maybe we wouldn't be paying a hundred and forty-seven dollars a month, we'd probably be paying a hundred, or maybe ninety, if everything was added in there. So something about this water study needs to be done and quick.
We, we can have, I'll have a proposal by Municipal Financial Services presented to the board. And that's how we'll do it.
But there was something presented in broad trust? There, there was something presented in broad trust before, because I can tell Earl that, you know, before we went through, you know, final talent, we had to wait for some information before there was any type of reduction at all.
This, this is, this is it here. On August nineteenth, two thousand fifteen, we did an overview of the water and sewer rates by Water and Sewer Utilities, the financial group.
Yes, the financial services.
And, and they were looking at, I guess this was, they talked about what our rates were and I, I'd like to move forward. I thought we were moving forward with this, if we didn't make a...
I think that was it, just that.
There was the overview, they had, they had a change in personnel at the eleventh hour. They had, they needed to speak with us again, they had a change in personnel and then that, well, we had to...
Well, listen, I feel, I feel, I, I will say this, I, I think that we could reduce, and, and that's, I strongly believe that we can reduce our sewer rates by fifteen percent. And, and I'd love to do it immediately, but I don't want to do it without some, someone saying, yes, guys up, ladies up here, you're doing the right thing. And so can we get to that point, how, how can we get to that point that maybe we can sit down here with them and they can run some...
Obviously contact them again, they've got, they obviously contact them.
Okay. Well, what were you talking about, that they had a change of personnel, what did they have to do?
They got a change of personnel, they got not to the, to the point where they came up with recommendations. They had some unanswered questions and that unfortunately commensurate with the change in our staff for that extended period. Like before that happened and between the two events, they, there was no conclusion they presented to the board as they had in previous studies. But they did initiative, but what was... What was initiated was a, a, kind of what we call an audit, that checks on these older meters as were identified by Alvey Water, the contractor that was having to be dismopped out, that company older, larger meters, that commercial meters that was all...
Well, listen, we could beat this, we could, we could beat this thing, but what I want to say is that because we're potentially launching this AMI program... Yep. That, that'll cost us well over a million and some dollars to do that. So you have to be careful about how we deal with the water rate, because all the new meters installed there. And also, we're going to overhaul the water treatment plant with a capital project recommended by Severn Trent, until we have the two wells done. And the two wells costs us a million, a hundred and thirty thousand dollars. But we're, we are spending quite a bit of money here on what's going to cost us the whole treatment plant, but it'd be several hundred thousand dollars to do that. Well, let's get them in here and let us talk to them again. Thank you. Mr. Lemon, would you like to come back up and...
I'll say it from here.
Okay.
My memory agrees with your memory. And that's all I have to say.
Thank you. Yes, ma'am, you want to come up and say a few words to us tonight? You were up.
Yeah. Name, name, right?
Yep, name and address and...
It's Anna Perry, I live at one forty-seven Highland Avenue. A big concern, I'm not one for public speaking.
You're terrifying.
But there's a big concern in there. I mean, I believe in Earl and Mary Jo, I have them, with their kids and everything, but we need help in there. Getting something together for the kids. It's like getting out of control.
And we need...
But getting something for kids after school or something for them to do instead of like the new Wawa they built, they're going up there and throwing trash everywhere. You know, they need something to do with their time. And most of them like don't have parents to spend time with them or some stuff, like, I don't know, like maybe like a, like a, I don't know. Maybe like a, something, a center in there or something, I don't know. You know what I mean?
We have our Parks and Rec program, for example.
Right, so most of the people in there don't have transportation, you know what I mean? They're low income, they don't have money for that.
Okay.
And it seems like, you know, I mean, I've just sat back and watched a couple of things, like I've noticed like our neighborhood, you never see nothing positive about it. And like when you read on Facebook, they're like, oh, well, they live in the manor and, you know, I mean, they did stuff for Rudy Bart and all that, why not do something for the manor? Why is the manor, we, there's nothing positive, you know what I mean? There's nothing going for this. Why not make it more positive?
We need help.
Why can't everybody get together, like, I mean...
I'd love for you to organize it, I'd love for you...
I don't know where to start, I don't know, you know what I mean?
One of the things you need to understand is that Cecil College had a, they have an education center down in the middle of, like, the manor.
Right.
And we, we just recently leased that property for a dollar to Meron World, I mean, Meron World Development Corporation. And they, they carry on with daycare services, they have food there for people who need help, they need GPD programs, they have all kinds of programs there to help people in the manor and elsewhere. They have ongoing programs there, which is a very positive step that we may provide for that, that development down there.
But what I'm saying is like you see a bunch of kids just riding around and looking up to the drug dealers in there. Why not make something for them to do instead of looking up to the drug dealer? You know what I mean, give them something else to do? You know what I mean?
Believe me, I know.
I was at, I mean, if it wasn't for one program at Elton High School, I would graduate. I mean, Nelson Boulton are pushing me out, I was in Maryland tomorrow, that helped me get my deployment and stuff. They need more positive things to help kids. You know what I mean? If it wasn't for some of them programs, I wouldn't have managed anything, you know what I mean?
Yeah, that program helped you, that program was also in school. Your kind of emphasis right then is for the kids after school in the neighborhood.
Right, I mean, I don't know where to go about starting anything or where to go, who to talk to, what to do, you know what I mean? I mean, there's a bunch of other women that are willing to help, nobody knows where to go, who to turn to.
What ages of children are we looking at?
There is a, from two and up. I mean, some kids, I've seen two-year-old, two-year-olds out in diapers, by the parents, they're in there sleeping. You know what I mean? You know, I, I've seen a lot. You know? My son lives in there and like, not just him, I want to bet, better than kids.
Yes, I agree.
You know what I mean? I want to give them something to look forward to. You know? I don't know.
Well, listen, I'm glad you brought it to our attention. Well, it's, it's always been on our attention.
It just doesn't seem...
And, and believe me, we, we're doing, I think we're doing as much as we can as a municipality, uh, we're, we're doing, this weekend, we've got a community cleanup.
Right.
Uh, we're, we're patrolling the area extremely heavy, I feel, probably, gee, I'm looking at you, what percentage of our time probably is spent on that side of town?
Oh, and I recovered shift, we're probably spending, uh, half of a twelve-hour shift in there.
So, we spend a lot of time, uh, on the west part of town and, and try to be more proactive, but I see exactly what you're saying.
But is there, I mean, is that not...
There's nothing, you're looking for, you're looking for some recreation for the kids.
Right, I mean, instead of them going destroying the new wah-wah in this first open, it's throwing, you know what I mean?
You know, I, I, I was on Road Two for many years.
Right.
Uh, from the time I was probably eight till thirteen, my sister lived there, and we played basketball in the Road Two. Uh, we would go and, and, uh, uh, play baseball where the community center is now, that was where we had our ball field.
I look at the parking, you know, I mean, it's...
Do you think that if we put some courts down there or...
Something like, I mean, there's a lot of kids in there that do play there, so they're using trash cans and like, stuff like that. You know what I mean? Like, I, I mean, I usually like basketball, right? Like, help, like maybe get a basketball, who's in there, who's in there to do, I don't know, you know what I mean? I don't know.
Well, I understand that part, but the thing is, once you get it in there, cut people, they have to take a little bit of pride and...
Right.
And, and make sure that the kids don't just fear it up, but they, they encourage them to use it, but somehow it's got to take control of...
Right.
Making sure that it's...
I mean, I see those sides, you know what I mean? It's just, I think if they had something more positive, it wouldn't be...
And you had a park down here, but they, uh, they had to take that out because people started using it for other reasons, but see, if there's a park for the little kids to go to, parents got to take a little bit of responsibility in doing their part.
Right, and I'm not saying it's all, it's not all you guys, parents too, you know? Maybe if there was something like that, the parents, you know, would do something. I don't know, you know what I mean? I'm trying to figure all of that.
Well, very good. Well, listen, we got your name and your address and we're going to keep you in the loop. Uh, send me, send me a message.
Okay. I mean, because I usually don't come to these, but I'm starting to get more...
I'm glad you came.
Like interested in it now, because, I mean, I just don't know who to go to.
Well, I also see the kids need it more than just physical activity. They might need a room, like some rooms where they can have the lottery, they come in with some, some educational things there because everybody's not suited for just doing those outside activities.
Yeah, like, or even like helping with homework or something.
Right.
Give them that, like, I don't know, what's it called, like Big Brother thing or something like that? I don't, you know what I mean? That's just a suggestion.
Yeah, listen, I, I really appreciate you bringing it to the table.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.